June first, two thousand and twenty-one. Jennifer, would you read the roll?
Yokus.
Uh, here.
McElroy?
Here.
Polinsky?
Here.
Stevens? Stocker?
Here.
Bowling?
Here.
Crombie?
Here.
Jacobs?
Yeah.
We have seven of our eight city council members. We have a quorum. So we are in an official meeting. Would you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next item on our agenda is the consent agenda, the items underneath there. Is there a motion to approve?
Polinsky approves.
And a second?
Moves to approve.
So was that a second?
McElroy seconds.
All right, all right. So all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. And we are down to citizen appearances and public comment. Matt, I haven't seen any survey monkey items. Are there any that you're aware of?
I am not aware of any.
We have one person that's going to speak in the Public Safety Committee, but otherwise I'm not aware of anybody that has approached us about that. So now, under Business of the Mayor, I have a proclamation. It is Pride Month this month. And so we have a proclamation, and I am presenting this to the City Council and the city on behalf of all citizens of this community. Whereas the city of Sun Prairie cherishes the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the importance of equity and freedom. And whereas all are welcome in the city of Sun Prairie, live, work, play, and every family in any shape deserves a place to call home where they are safe, happy, and supported by friends and neighbors. And whereas the city of Sun Prairie denounces prejudice and unfair discrimination based on age, gender identity, gender expression, race, color, religion, marital status, national origin, sexual orientation, or physical attributes as an affront to our fundamental principles. And whereas Pride Month began in June nineteen sixty-nine on the first anniversary of the Stonewall uprising in New York City after LGBTQ plus and allied friends rose up and fought against the constant police harassment and discriminatory laws that have since been declared unconstitutional. And whereas the city of Sun Prairie appreciates the cultural, civic, and economic contributions of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus community, which strengthens our social welfare. And whereas it is imperative, the young people in our community, regardless of sexual orientation, gender identity, or expression, feel valued, safe, empowered, and supported by their peers and community leaders. And whereas despite being marginalized, LGBTQ plus people continue to celebrate authenticity, acceptance, and love. Now therefore, I, Paul Esser, Mayor of the city of Sun Prairie, do hereby proclaim the month of June twenty twenty-one as LGBTQ Pride Month in the city of Sun Prairie and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by the members of the LGBTQ plus community and to actively promote the principles of equity, liberty, and justice. And testimony thereof, I have signed it the first day of June twenty twenty-one. So I am presenting this to all of you and to the community with my deepest regards. Thank you. I have one other subject I would like to mention under Business of the Mayor. And that is, at our last meeting, our staff gave us an agenda that had a slightly modified form where it called out the fiscal impact of an action that we were about to take and the staff person that was bringing it to us. And the agenda, it might be the agenda you're looking at tonight. Uh, but I called or emailed Aaron about it over the weekend and I said, I'm missing that. What happened? And he said, only two people responded. And he took that as an indication that the council wasn't that enthusiastic about having that additional information on there. I said that I thought it was helpful, that it focused our discussion, gave us the parameters of the fiscal impact, and told us who was coming up to speak on an item. And as the chair of this meeting, where we're into things like we are this evening with new business, it's helpful for me to know. So I asked him if he would continue that process for a few more weeks. And with your indulgence, I would like us to continue to use that agenda. And then in a few weeks, after a few meetings, ask ourselves again if that's something that we want to continue. If you're not comfortable with it, you don't see a value, you think it's taking up space, or it's confusing, and you'd prefer to have it, then that's fine. I'll go along with that. But I would appreciate you giving it a little more time if you would. So I'm not going to ask you to commit this evening on it. I'm just asking for your patience with me and and we'll ask Aaron to continue to go back to what he had started. I thought it was a good idea. So thank you for that. So let's move on to committee reports. And the first ones, Steve, are from committee of the whole.
Thank you, Your Honor. Yeah, the first item is a resolution approving the Second Amendment to purchase and sale agreement with Proper Bouche LLC for property at four oh two East Main slash one oh nine to one eleven Vine Street and subsequent budget amendment that we'll be talking about to cover additional environmental costs. We had this come forward to the council on June sixteenth, twenty twenty, as far as the purchase and sale agreement with Proper Bouche LLC. And as part of that agreement, there was, the agreement laid out the requirement for a material management plan and obligated the city to reimburse the developer for any soil remediation due to previous life on that property. The DNR has now required that a vapor barrier system be installed with the construction of the building causing additional environmental costs that were not anticipated. The city, as the facilitator of the development of the site, wants to ensure that the site is suitable, whether it's this development or others, for any development, and will now reimburse up to, and I want to emphasize, up to one hundred thousand dollars for soil remediation, vapor barrier design, construction, and installation to the developer. Staff is recommending to cover the increased environmental reimbursement costs through a budget amendment from TID fourteen fund balance in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars or up to, under the professional services budget. Thus, I would like to make a motion that we agree to reimburse up to one hundred thousand dollars to Proper Bouche LLC to cover these environmental costs.
Then I'll second it, Alder Crombie.
All right. So now we're into discussion on this item. Is there any discussion? Mike?
Yeah, I have a question. Maybe I just misunderstood this, which is worse, I heard Steve twice say up to one hundred thousand dollars. But when I did the math on the supporting doc documents, it came up to over, or almost a hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
We've already authorized thirty thousand on that. That was our initial. But and so this would be.
I'm looking for, I'm actually looking, not to you, Steve, I'm looking to Scott to clarify this for me.
Yep, he's got it panned up.
Yep, I'd be glad to. So the, the first agreement talked about or obligated the city for up to thirty thousand dollars for dealing with the soil. And then we got, excuse me, then we got the information from the DNR about the vapor barriers. So that was the new new piece of information. And we put together, we asked the the consultant we were dealing with to put together a detailed budget of what those costs may be. So the amendment that we're dealing with here would obligate the city for up to one hundred thousand dollars. We, we kind of expect this, this actual cost to be somewhat less than the, than the hundred thousand dollars. It is a conservative estimate. I think the numbers that you're looking at there, Alder Jacobs, are kind of worst case situations. If, you know, if we, if we find the worst as we're dealing with the building. And, and one particular example would be soil to be removed and disposed of at a appropriate facility. The actual amount that the consultant thinks is out there is about a hundred cubic yards. And the amount that's in the budget is, is a thousand, just to to kind of be conservative. And that's considerably high. That would be if the entire site needs to be addressed. So we are expecting the cost to be less, but the city would be reimbursing up to one hundred thousand dollars and the applicant would be responsible for anything over that. So that's a long, detailed answer to the question, but hopefully it covers what you were looking for.
Yeah, it's satisfactory. Thank you, Scott.
All right. Any additional discussion on this item? Jennifer, let's get the roll.
Yokus?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stocker?
Aye.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, good.
Very much.
All right, Steve.
Second item, a resolution directing city staff and the Transit Commission to investigate and plan for local bus service implementation. In February twenty twenty-one, Madison Metro Transit approached the city of Sun Prairie to inquire about the willingness to enter into a partnership to extend the local spur of the future Bus Rapid Transit System, or BRT, to the Sun Prairie Park and Ride with service beginning in the fall of twenty twenty-four. On March thirtieth, twenty twenty-one, the council approved adding the city of Sun Prairie to the Madison Metro's BRT system. The city council directed staff to gain more specific commitments from Madison Metro Transit for the provision of local bus service to Sun Prairie at or before BRT implementation. Madison Metro Transit has committed to provide up to three all-day bus, local bus routes to the city in conjunction with operating the BRT system. In anticipation of implementing local bus service, a significant amount of planning and public engagement will be required, including a scientific local bus survey in the fall of this year, multiple public engagement meetings and interactions with stakeholders in the winter of this year into the winter of twenty twenty-two, a public hearing on the draft routes at Transit Commission in the winter of twenty twenty-two, and a presentation of final routes to the council January of twenty twenty-three with potential implementation of local bus service in conjunction with BRIGHT in August of twenty twenty-four. Thus, we are bringing forward tonight, and I would like to make a motion that the city council would direct the Transit Commission and city staff to investigate and plan for local bus service implementation.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second it.
Marine seconds. Now we're into discussion. Any discussion on this? I see none. Jennifer?
Yokus?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stocker?
Aye.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right. Now we'll skip down to the Public Safety Committee, Mary.
Yes, Your Honor. On May nineteenth, the Public Safety Committee met to review response to the towing service request proposal. And staff removed, staff reviewed the three proposals that were submitted, and Badger State Towing scored the highest in overall ranking, rankings. And after careful review and consideration, the Public Safety Committee moved to recommend contracting with Badger State Towing for towing service for an initial three-year contract term with the option to extend an additional one year twice. And I would like to make a motion to approve that.
Wait, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so now we're into discussion. So Todd Menzel from Prairie Land Towing, one of the three companies that submitted a response, wanted to speak with us this evening. And Matt, I'm not seeing there, Todd. There you are. You're appearing. I've been watching the participants. So I told Todd that we would give him the opportunity to address us for a few moments. Few minutes, so minutes, not moments, Todd. So go ahead, Todd. Tell us what's on your mind.
I appreciate it. So I want to give you a little background. My name is Todd Menzel. I represent Prairie Land Towing. We've operated within the city limits since May of nineteen eighty-four, actually celebrating our thirty-seventh year earlier this month. We're a certified woman-owned business within the state of Wisconsin, and our owner, Jeannie Menzel, actually graduated from Sun Prairie High School here in nineteen sixty-nine. And she's a strong supporter of the Sun Prairie school system, most recently donating seventy-five thousand dollars to Sun Prairie Athletics. And she's been one of the largest towing entities in America for several years now. So our services are not equally measured by merely seeing a tow truck driving down one of the local roads. The Menzels have strong ties to Sun Prairie, its values, its community. From U Sports, providing parade platforms, we've always been here when you need us the most. We've been your trusted contractor since two thousand and one. So growing from a two-truck operation right here in Sun Prairie to one hundred and forty-seven service units spanning three states, Jeannie has constructed one of the largest towing entities in the country, all while keeping her core values in Sun Prairie here. A few concerns I had on the RFP, I'm just going to lay them out real quickly. During the RFP process, there was no verification of equipment for vendors leading to companies did not actually have the necessary assets to submit a bid. And as the city grows, this will not put the police department into a position of strength as it pertains to public safety in our community. Response times are crucial for emergency services. This contract requires redundancy, equipment, and manpower to handle the spikes for city events and weather. Badger has displayed no evidence in its response that it can handle or maintain a twenty-minute response time. No detail was provided of any response time information within the proposal, aside from merely stating, quote, "We guarantee a twenty to twenty-five minute response time to all police calls." No detail outlining their response times historically, or how they plan to accomplish such a hefty task under a new contract. And the RFP actually requires a twenty-minute or less response time, yet all thirty points were given to the vendor Badger. The RFP also did not require a response as it pertains to the number of employees each proposer employs. Vendors having twenty-four-hour coverage working on shifts versus staffers working on call from home should be scored higher. And the Badger proposal states, outside of normal working hours, we employ three employees on call. And so in my opinion, this is not consistent of a twenty-four-seven operation with the best response times. To give you a little background, Prairie Land has never closed for the last fifteen years, not one minute of one single day. We have twenty-four-hour live dispatch and twenty-four-hour live shift work. At the time of submission, a local preference was given to Badger, even though not having operational facilities within the city limits at that time. They had no employees, no trucks working within the city, or no office staff that was actually open to the public as of May seventeenth. Yet it was given the five points for being local. It appears the facility is still underway with no gate installed, no staff on site even as of today. The points should only be awarded to those who are open to the public at the time of submission. And local vendor status clearly was outlined, and I quote, "Only suppliers within the city of Sun Prairie limits, as of the bid's due date, will receive preference." This bid was submitted on April fifth. This bid was also rebid from October twenty twenty with even more strenuous circumstances of local vendors only. The Badger proposal goes on to say that they have seven employees at the eleven forty Wilburn address, yet they were not operational as of May seventeenth, even the fence wasn't up. Under the insurance requirements, the contract requires a five-million-dollar umbrella. It appears, and even if you look at your, your notes today that was submitted by staff, it does not appear that Badger has any umbrella coverage whatsoever. It's actually highlighted on their, their insurance certificate. Prairie Land has over four times the on-hook coverage than any other proposer, a hundred thousand versus four hundred fifty thousand. The RFP also stated you had a million-dollar limit for disease for employees and incidents. Prairie Land is actually the only vendor that maintains such coverage. Badger only carries a hundred thousand dollars of coverage. Why is this a concern? The concern is if the proposer were to tow one of the city's fire trucks and be involved in an accident, they would not actually have adequate coverage, on-hook coverage is what it's called, to repair or replace that service unit. This insurance adds significant cost to an operation, and the umbrella alone would add sixty thousand dollars plus per year. There's no requirement of a minimum length of time in business to ensure financial-stable businesses obtain these types of awards. The proposed vendor has only been in business for four years, stating March twentieth, twenty seventeen was their first day in business, while Prairie Land has been in town since nineteen eighty-four. Financially, there are actually nine court records in the past year and a half of Badger State failing to pay sales tax revenues with holding tax and unemployment compensation to the tune of tens of thousands of dollars. Why is this a concern to me? Well, the concern is that fifty-six percent of all vehicles in this city never pay a dime for towing. That exposes a financial risk by any proposer, and it adds additional fees that have to be paid to legally dispose those vehicles. So let that sink in. Fifty-six percent of all cars towed in the city of Sun Prairie never pay Prairie Land Towing or any towing vendor a dime. It appears another hidden cost to Badger's proposal is that citizens will be charged a credit card processing fee. The proposer, the proposed vendor clearly outlines that a credit card payment with no additional fee is strictly limited to "for city" in quotes. This would add additional hidden costs that are not outlined within the proposal and not calculated within the sheet for a fair display of services on pricing. So all these line items on the price sheet were not actually evaluated properly as well to calculate a total points system fairly. Specifically lines H and I were removed only after Badger State did not submit information and was given additional opportunity to do so per the finance spreadsheet. Now, quote again, on their spreadsheet, it says, "I called Badger State to verify their daily storage rate since they are not listed on the rate sheet," end quote. No other proposer, I checked with Schmitz as well, no other proposer received a call to clarify its pricing. A few last things. Under the no preference toes, Badger clearly outlines on the price sheet, only the fees listed in our pricing sheet will be charged. Yet on the second sheet, it also quotes, "There may come a call that we use something not listed and will have to charge for it." So that's, again, inconsistent with the expectations of the RFP. Last few points, staff didn't compare miscellaneous pricing. There's several potential charges that may arise from a towing service as clearly outlined by the services that were submitted. Actually, the, the price sheet by Badger was submitted twice. One's a clean digitally signed copy. Another is a handwritten copy with, with additional information on that the first didn't have on it, as I requested through public records. Last of the references, no vendor actually received responses from all references that were contacted. Schmitz received three, Prairie Land received two, and Badger State received only one. And even the one that Badger did receive, they stated they typically respond within twenty minutes. I'm not sure how we evaluate those responses, as there's no point system that would be shared, and nothing was recorded over the phone per the public records request, just a survey monkey that had very simple responses. You know, it's really hard to say, how is it possible to, to, to charge a seventy-five-dollar flat fee to tow a heavy-duty vehicle? And no less by subcontractor, because Badger State does not actually own a vehicle that has the capacity to tow one of the city's largest vehicles, meaning a street sweeper, an end loader, a fire truck, dump truck, plow truck, whatever. They don't actually own that truck. So I'm not sure how they can charge seventy-five dollars for something they don't own and then expect a subcontractor to come in and do that from out of town and do it within a timely fashion. A subcontractor has no incentive to meet a twenty-minute response time. They, they'll not work for the same cost as proposed, and it would be financially unreasonable and reckless of the city to expect this to happen when it requires a tow truck with a five-hundred-thousand-dollar value. Lastly, I just want to point out our facility here in Sun Prairie. The RFP was clear that it was looking for a storage facility in the city limits or within a fifteen-mile radius to store four vehicles indoors. Prairie Land here maintains a twenty-five-thousand-square-foot facility, properly permitted to store vehicles indoors and out. I think opening this RFP to a fifteen-mile radius was, was a little bit of a problem, because you're actually strength, you're actually stressing out the police department a bit, because now they have to leave their city limits potentially to inventory or view future vehicles in impound. So again, I want to kind of hit on all those different points. I'm sorry if I went so fast. I didn't want Mary to cut me off too quickly there. But I do, would like to thank the common council for hearing my concerns, and I'm absolutely available for any questions or any clarification if someone has questions.
All right. Thank you, Todd. So we've got Police Chief here in Michelle Garrison from the Police Department. I was going to ask them, Mike, if they wanted to discuss the process. Would you like to hear that, or do you have a question first, Mike?
I, I did have a question for Todd, but I suppose it can wait. That's fine.
Okay. So Chief, for Michelle, would you like to go through the process that, that led us to this?
Sure. Sure. So we are, we did put out a RFP because the contract had expired in October. And we had only received one proposal, and that was from Prairie Land. And we looked at the RFP to make sure there wasn't anything that was too restrictive from allowing other vendors to at least put in a proposal. And we did see that the storage requirement to be within the city limits was a bit restrictive. And we also called around different vending companies to make sure, were they aware that there was even an RFP out there? And so we did consult with city attorney and finance department, and we did change the restriction storage facility to be within fifteen mile radius. We did let Prairie Land know that we were going to be denying that proposal and opening up a new process. And we did reach out to other tow companies, and they were not even aware that there was an RFP out there. So we did, and that, we received three proposals. And with regards to the references, and Todd, I understand he's enjoyed a number of years providing the towing services to us, and we've appreciated it, and we've appreciated his continuing to do so while we were trapped. And when it came to the references, as far as the monkey survey, those were only sent out to the folks we weren't able to reach on phone. So we did reach a number of people over the phone who were familiar with all three towing companies, with the sheriff's office, the state patrol, local insurance company, just various agencies as well. So, and Badger State does in fact have a location on Wilburn Road. They have received their CUP from Community Development, their in permit, their building permit, they erected the fence, their, their sign is in the window. The office has been there for a couple of years, I want to say. So with regards to all of the operational requirements that we had in the RFP, absolutely, they can meet. And even through the people we spoke with on the phone, they had no doubt that Badger State would be able to service us with their equipment, same as Schmitz. Schmitz was also very highly spoken of. So we went through this established process. Scored based on the functional requirements as well as reference evaluation as well. And it resulted in Badger State scoring the highest, Schmitz scoring second highest. And then Prairie Land. So we understand, can appreciate Todd not wanting to lose this business for the next few years, but we also understand that the contract does allow for us if, if we can't, if we're not serviced the way that we were expecting, we can give Badger State thirty-day notice and perhaps go to the second highest proposer. But we believe it was a fair process. We followed the city's established process, and we're willing to give them a shot.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. Mike, now you want to do your question?
Yeah, well, and I see Russell's here as well, so I'll have questions for him, too. Is that okay, Russ? Are you here for questions? I see your hand is up. Okay, you're muted right now, but that's okay. So Todd, let me first, this question for you, Todd, maybe the only question I ask you. First of all, thanks for all the charity your business does for the city. But my question for you is, what kind of employee benefits do you offer?
Well, that's. Uh, well, that's really unparalleled in the towing industry. We provide full benefits. We cover health insurance. We cover short-term disability, long-term disability, life insurance, a 401K with a match, vacation, our average tenure of our employees about fourteen years. Uh, our oldest employee turned thirty-seven years this year. So, uh, it's unparalleled when it comes to the towing recovery industry. Uh, we by far are a family-owned business. Our health insurance is a zero dollar deductible. We absolutely are looking, my, my dad died when I was twelve years old. So my dad had a fifth heart attack. He had terrible health insurance. He had terrible, he didn't have any benefits. He was, he was a small business owner. Uh, unfortunately, uh, he sat on a, on a gurney having a heart attack and his doctor wasn't available because he was on HMO. So at that point in time, my mom sat down and us as a family as we grew to ensure that our staff had the absolute best benefits possible. And that's, that's what we've done throughout the last, uh, almost forty years now.
Todd, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to bring up that, that memory. Um, Russell, is he, go by Russell, is that right? You're not muted, but I still can't hear you.
How about now?
Oh, now, just, yeah, I heard you say how about now. All right, I have the same question for you. Um, what kind of employee benefits do you offer?
Uh, currently, we don't have the, we can't mad Prairielands, uh, health insurance and, and such as that. Um, we are still very small, family-owned. Four out of seven employees are all from the Bass family, Genesee's, and she is our registered woman owner also in the state of Wisconsin. Um, we, we have paid vacation for our employees and we do tend to work very much with them as much as we can, but we don't have the benefits package that Prairieland has.
Okay. Um, I do have one question for you, Russell, about the RFP specifically. And this is a quote from it and, um, or from the proposal, I'm sorry. And I just don't understand what it means. It says, "There may come a call that we use something not listed and we'll have to charge for it." Well, can you give me some specifics about what we're talking about there?
So I'll give you an example. Um, before, uh, coming here to Badger State, I worked with Bill's Towing, was also a very large vendor, um, in the area up in Lodi, Middleton and Baraboo. I was an operations manager for him. Uh, we had a call in Middleton where I worked for shy of nine years before with, uh, towing for the city of Middleton as a police tow truck, uh, through Arneson's and then Bill's when he purchased it. We had a call over by the Fiskers plant for a concrete pumper truck that had extended its pumper over the parking structure and had tipped over. Um, we have rotators, thirty-five ton, sixteen ton and a twenty-five ton out there was unable to do the job. We had to call an outside crane, an actual crane that builds buildings in. Um, so that would be my example. There's going to be an incident where there's not a tow truck out there that can do it. Or, you know, we have to call a diver in because the water, it's too, it's not safe to send a tow truck operator in to do the job. It's an unforeseen thing and I can't give you prices on those because it's something that no one can justify or, you know, be prepared for.
Okay. So Mr. Mayor, I have questions for staff and for the, um, recommended, um, applicant. Which, which would you prefer I ask first?
Your choice. Go ahead as you prefer.
All right, Russell, you're there, so I guess I'll ask you. And, and Michelle, I want to apologize to you that you, I don't know if you were aware of this, but at least on my end, you were breaking up. So I may ask a question that you've already answered and it's just because I wasn't sure. So the first one was about the, the company's headquarters. So, and maybe headquarters isn't the right word, but so Russell, are you, are you, you have an, are you, are you headquarters in Sun Prairie?
I am. I'm actually sitting in our, our office here in Sun Prairie, which we've had since, the lease has been signed since April first and I have personally been here every day. And I have one of my trucks here every day. And if you check my parking lot, uh, his statement of not access today, I have five tow trucks in the parking lot that have been here since Friday. Um, and they are on our security cameras. We do, I have been here personally every day. Our trucks aren't parked here every day because we do have outdoing calls. We do still cover into Madison. Um, so our employees have still been doing our typical calls. But we do have our main office and storage is here in Sun Prairie at eleven forty Wilburn. Um, I have a second floor office, uh, three offices on this floor.
Okay. Um, does Badgerland have twenty-four hour coverage in Sun Prairie or is this contracted out?
Uh, no, I am twenty-four seven in here. We have, um, there are seven of us. Uh, all of the employees will be based out of Sun Prairie. Windsor will eventually be phased out once I can accommodate indoor storage here because that is our second storage location that has the indoor storage, which is just outside of the city and does fall within the fifteen miles. Um, I am working with the building owner here on adding, uh, another building on the property, which is, uh, in the works for the near future, wouldn't be today or tomorrow. Um, but we are based here. Um, today we had four people in this office in and out, uh, picking up trucks and doing, you know, their shifts. We are twenty-four seven. Uh, morning, we have during the day, there are, um, there will be five people on and at night there are three people that are on duty. Um, there is one person on call that is here in the city. And then, but we, you know, when we put three people on call, that's how we were operating in Windsor. Um, after eleven PM, we would go to an on-call status until four AM. And then we had people actually on duty. We do release cars twenty-four seven, you know, to owners. We've had, uh, I actually had customers here on Memorial Day taking items out of their car, no charges or anything extra for that. We were here in the building and let them in. But we are twenty-four seven here in Sun Prairie, yes.
Okay. So if I understand, you're saying you have, you have drivers in Sun Prairie overnight?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So I wonder, no. I, I think that's all I got for you, Russell. The rest of my questions right now are for the staff. And I'm not sure who that would be. I don't know if that's you, Chief Stephes or Michelle. Okay, Michelle, I see Kristen's there too. So, so the applicant, Badgerland made some claims regarding equipment. Um, do we verify that they own this equipment and that it's available?
We ask whether they have the equipment to handle, we've asked all of the references whether they had the equipment sufficient to handle any of their calls. And everyone we spoke with said if they didn't have the equipment, and this was both for any, any of the vendors, if they didn't have it, they can sub out, which according to our RFP, they can do. That's not a problem if they contract out. It's unbeknownst to us. Um, but they get the job done and they still get it done within the twenty minutes. So we, that was not part of our requirement to tell us, you know, list, list the equipment you have, although Russell has quite a bit. So, um, that's not a, that a concern.
Okay. So by the way, I, I know we're, we're new at this, so there's probably some bumps and, and I get that. Um, however, I don't want service to go down because we're, you know, still figuring it out, right?
Sure. Yep.
So, so do we know if they have the number of towing vehicles available in case of snow emergencies or corn fests or other, you know, events that are, are likely but not common?
What would you say, Russell, what, what kind of, you were, you were telling me about your inventory recently. What do you have there?
Well, we currently have nine trucks in rotation, uh, three in the medium heavy duty range. Um, and then the remainder in light and medium duty. We have three flatbeds, two light duty wreckers, two medium duty wreckers and a semi. And we are also looking at additional purchase of two more flatbeds for Sun Prairie alone, just for the Sun Prairie area. But currently there are nine vehicles insured and registered to Badger State Towing and in operation.
So Russell, I have to concede my ignorance here. I mean, you might as well tell me you have a space shuttle. I mean, I don't really know what we actually need. That's, that was, that's my question. And, and who determines what we actually need? Because I, I, I don't know this.
So as far as towing, he is right. I don't have a truck for fire trucks currently. Um, we can tow street sweepers, we can tow, you know, unloaded, uh, city county plow trucks. Uh, to that extent with our, uh, trucks that we do have, we can do tractor trailers. We just split them. We don't have, these will come in that does it at once. But again, we are, we only charge for the one truck in the event that something like that was to happen. We would charge our heavy rate to remove it because it's not the customer's fault that we didn't have the, you know, a thirty-five ton. Um, we do actually at the moment are looking at a twenty-five ton, which would do fully loaded tractor trailers. I'm not sure if it would do a fire truck, but I do have someone lined up to help in the event of fire trucks needing to be towed. Um, I've also spoken with people that have, are currently towing fire equipment and it's not Prairieland. Bill's Towing has recently towed their pumper truck and several other pieces of equipment. Um, and we would continue to most likely work with Bill's or Schmitz or even Prairieland. Um, at the rate that we agreed, yes, we put seventy-five dollars in there. And if they come in and charge us more, that is, this charge to the city is a seventy-five dollars and that's our discretion. Um, you know, that's what we charge the city. And that's the honor we would make. We would honor the agreement. So he is correct. I can't tow a fire truck currently. Uh, we have added the umbrella as it stayed in our policy and we spoke with the city ahead of time, let them know we would add any additional insurance that was required at the time of ward and we have added the umbrella and all that has been sent over. Um, we are waiting on one more piece of paperwork from our adjuster, which was delayed due to the Memorial Day weekend. Um, but all that has been also sent over and updated with the umbrella in regards to all that.
Okay. So you mentioned something and Todd mentioned it earlier and I, and I read it somewhere and I'm not really, I'm not clear on this, so I don't know who's gonna answer this question, anybody, but so my understanding that you charge seventy-five dollars to the city for heavy duty vehicles, but you charge two hundred and fifty dollars an hour to citizens? Who have heavy duty vehicles that have to be moved?
Yes, sir. Like I said, um, as you can tell, uh, between all three vendors, all the charges to the city are less than what they would be to the public for towing law enforcement vehicles, city-owned vehicles. Again, it is, you know, you are a contracted vendor. You do, you know, and everybody does like rates with AAA. Prairieland is huge, was huge with Prairie, they're AAA. I'm not sure if they still are. They have different contracted rates, which are also far less than their, you know, city rates of the, the actual individual that would call. So we, we approach this as a contract. We gave you guys a discounted rate um, for your equipment to help save taxpayers money and the city money. And then, you know, our citizens, you know, they do get charged the full price, which is still very comparably priced with the other three that did propose in the heavy duty and medium duty range.
So just to make this clear, I, I'm gonna say that this doesn't save taxpayers money. It particularly costs taxpayers if they have their vehicle towed. There, you know, it sounds like you're giving us a discount and then you make up that money somewhere else. That's what that's not. I'm really uncomfortable with that and maybe the whole industry does it and I'm unhappy with the entire industry if they do that. Is this what I'm hearing you say?
It is an industry-wide practice to charge cities and municipalities less than what you charge the public. Even if you were to check Todd's pricing, he charges the city less by considerable amounts than what he charges his, the, the customer, the cash paying customer.
I think that practice stinks. I think it may work for city budgets, but I think that practice stinks. And the next time this contract comes out, I'm gonna see what I can do to get that out of there. I'm sorry, Michelle, I know you wanna talk.
That's okay. Um, but that, that was definitely Michelle, you may want to type. When it came to the references was, uh,
Michelle, you may have to type because I, I'm not hearing you. I'm sorry.
Turn your video off, Michelle. That might help and we could hear you.
Yeah, your bandwidth problem. If you can turn off your video and talk, we'll trust it to you.
Do you, do you hear me better now?
We hear you better now, so far.
Okay, okay. Um, that was a large sticking point of the majority of any of our reference calls. Um, and many are, uh, officers, our dispatchers, they often receive complaints. And when we've let Todd know about that in the past, I know Brian Teasdale has had conversations with him in the past about the high costs to the citizens when they go to pick up their cars from impound. We get, um, complaint letters and how can you guys be associated? Um, and the folks that we spoke with in the Dane County Sheriff's Office, the State Patrol, Insurance, um, they said that, uh, there's a major price separation between Badger and Prairieland as well as Schmitz. Um, Badgerland and Schmitz Towing are much more fair and reasonably priced for citizens, for vehicle owners. Um, it's true that they all charge a lesser fee to the cities, to the municipalities, but when it comes to the vehicle owners going to pick up their cars, uh, that's why the reference points were the least for Prairieland. Um, so we have dealt with a lot of those complaints over the years. Um, we, a lot of high references for both Badger and Schmitz. They were very close. Um, I know Madison recently also, um, went under contract with Schmitz, um, and they're, they're very pleased. It's, it's, we're not, we feel good about using Badger State. We really do. We really do. From everything that we've heard from all of the references, very valid references as well as customers. Um, we even had listened to a story about a, an Army Humvee being held up, uh, in impound and not being allowed to let go until they received payment and it was just exorbitant fees. So we do think that the citizens, uh, will be happy. We've had people say that when, uh, when they are asked, who would you like to? Anyone but, anyone but Prairieland. Um, and Badger has been requested, Schmitz has been requested. So it's fair. This was, this is an established process in the city. It was a fair process.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle. Do you have more, Mike?
I do. And, and by the way, it's, it's Todd raised the questions and that's, that's why I'm asking more about the process rather than, than the conclusions. At least I am. So another question I have is do tow vehicles have to be stored in the city limits?
Is that to Russell?
No, um, that's to the people who wrote the RFP.
No, within fifteen miles of the city limits.
Okay. Um, the RFP does allow for subcontractors, right?
Correct.
How do we know how they'll perform? I mean, do we have some sort of, something in place to measure those things?
The subcontractors I imagine that Badger would be using would be, um, Bill's Towing, Schmitz Towing, Prairieland if they'll have it. So, um, from the most part, it, it sounds as if a lot of these companies, they work well together when it comes down to it. So I, and I would feel very comfortable with Schmitz as well and Bill's as well.
Okay. Well, again, I'm asking more about how we, how we got to this place rather than, and quite, I mean, I talked to Todd and I know at least two other elders talked to Todd. I don't know how many people he talked to. So he raised questions with me that I'm following up on because in some cases I just wanna understand them. Um, so like one of them was about the RFP. What, what kind of follow-up did we do regarding unclear questions? Because I understand that Todd was unhappy. Sorry, Todd, I'm talking about you in the third person here, but I'm just going from my notes. Um, Todd was unhappy. He gave specifics while others did not. And I guess that goes back to when I'm asked about the verification process. You know, I'm not sure how, how we did that. We, we have a required response time. How do we know that they'll make it other than they said, well, we'll make it? Do we have a way to gauge that?
Yeah, we specifically asked when we called around for references, we specifically asked people who have handled towing contracts for their agencies for a number of years and specifically asked, are they able to meet that? Absolutely. So they, both Schmitz and Badger and Prairieland. Um, the response, meeting the response was not a question amongst any of them, actually.
Okay, Michelle. So I'm sorry. It feels like you're kind of on the spot. I did, I thought maybe the chief would be answering these questions, but I'm just gonna keep firing away. Whoever wants to can answer them. So what, the next question I had about, about the references is, you know, we recently had this, or maybe you don't know, we recently had this kerfluffle about, um, our, our, our waste and garbage pickup. And, um, uh, another, um, city clerk from another city who lives in Sun Prairie was complaining that, um, the references weren't comparable. Is that, I mean, were client references comparable to Sun Prairie, the ones that you talked to?
Absolutely, absolutely. We spoke with the lieutenant in the, in the Dane County Sheriff's Office, um, who was familiar with all three. A state patrol sergeant, familiar with all three. Insurance company representative, familiar with all three. Um, police dispatchers and as well as specific people on their reference lists. So, uh, from villages of, of Wanakee, Manona. So again, we spoke with a, a number of people that our review panel has a lot of respect for, I'll say. So, yeah.
Thank you. That's, that's useful note. All right. Just two more questions. And again, I'm, I'm taking words out of Todd's mouth in this one. So Todd had some, some legal questions about whether, whether this was valid because of some inconsistencies in the RFP and the actual proposal submitted. So who's gonna address these things? Like licenses, the bid sheet, adequate insurance? Who, I'm not sure who that question goes, maybe that question goes to Aaron. I'm not sure who.
No, I can, I can answer that as well. Correct. So Todd mentioned something about a fee sheet that was, uh, redacted and blacked, blackened out. And the reason that it was red- Uh, redacted and blacked, blackened out. And the reason that it was redacted, it wasn't redacted by us. It was redacted by Badger State because they knew as part of the instructions was that the financials were to be, uh. Separated from the proposal. So they had redacted that so that we couldn't see the fees. So we, we didn't see fees. From any of the three towing companies. Those were kept by finance as finance received the RFP responses first. They kept all the financials separate. They gave us everything else to review. And then when we were done reviewing and scoring, then they. Uh, provided their scoring on the costs. Um, as far as any, if. Any questions he may have had, there definitely was opportunity, plenty of opportunity for him to reach out. And ask for questions of clarification. There was a posting date for questions and then we would provide answers by that date. Um, he had asked if anyone was confused about, um, the pricing and. We didn't have any indication from Schmitz or Badger or prairie land on any confusion if there was. Uh, I would have hoped that they would have reached out and asked. Um. As far as the fees. On H and I, Kristen, I, I think Kristen is here. She's explained it, I think, the past few times, but. Um, Kristen, maybe you can explain that one more time for everybody.
Hi there. Thank you. Um, yes, when finance, when the finance department was putting together the, um, cost analysis. Uh, for all three vendors, what we did was we created a spreadsheet with all of the items listed on the. Fee proposal as requested. Um, so the police department had. Um, had created the fee proposal, what line items they wanted identified. And there were, um. There were two items that could not be easily identified. They weren't. They weren't filled out with exact dollar amounts, um, across the board for all three companies. Um, and without having to. Reach out with questions or try and dig through the additional fee sheets that all vendors provided. Um, those two items were not included when analyzing the cost across the board.
Typically changes the scoring process as well when you, when you remove those.
Okay, um, so I have just one more question and this might be something that no one's really talked about or thought about, but. Um, I talked to, um. Chief Teasdale, might've been his last day about this very question. And, um. And, and he said, well, you know, if this doesn't work out, if they're not able to fulfill their obligations, we can cancel. The contract and Michelle, you said a thirty day notice. So my question is what? You know, maybe this isn't the right date to ask this question, but what measurables are there that will determine and who will determine? Okay, they're not living up to their end. We should terminate this contract.
Sure, absolutely. We, we always know when, um, toes are being requested, our officers and sergeants will keep us. Uh, in, informed on that. Uh, also when it comes to the vehicle owners and any complaint. Um, that we would receive. So I know in the past that, um. When we received complaints and Brian did reach out to Todd, I know that, um. You know, the explanation was, well, you know, we, we pay our people well and I have a lot of equipment and. Um, our rates are what are, what they are. Um, again, we. Always received good service from prairie land, but we also would receive quite a bit of, uh. I guess I'd say complaint handling from, from the outside, from vehicle owners and folks that just felt like they were really being charged excess, excessive rates.
In, in my, oh guys, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I've never. He received one written notice from the city of Sun Prairie since two thousand and one we started. And I've talked to Brian Teasdale on one occasion about it, to be specific. So to, to request that these are happening day in and day out. Uh, I guess I'd, one question, be the documentation to it. Number two, I'm wondering if you're going to have the same problems with a different vendor because people are not expecting. A thousand dollar DUI ticket. They're not expecting a two or three hundred dollar tow bill. And it seems out of range because it's sticker shock from the first time that they've gotten towed. I mean. Experience your own life. How many times have you been in an accident or been towed? Maybe once in your entire life. So it's not something you see on a day to day basis. And furthermore, um, I, I think it's a little, little on edge here to, to listen to all those complaints when I've never been. Formally notified of any complaint by writing, uh, to my knowledge in twenty years.
So Michelle, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not, I hope I'm not going to repeat yourself, but I'm not sure I got the answer about what are the measurables? That will determine whether or not we're going to cancel. Um, a contract. Is it a number of complaints from citizens? Is that what I'm, is that what I'm understanding you to say?
No, no, not at all. We'll, we'll be making sure that, um, we are getting response within the twenty minutes that, you know, they are doing everything that. Our functional requirements require that, you know, they, they clean up the scene, they get the roads off the roadway, they. Tow the, the vehicles where they're supposed to. They make the vehicles accessible to customers. Um. We'll just make sure that that's happening basically. We, we are aware of every tow basically that takes place. So we, we will be aware of how it was handled each time.
I understand. So I'm saying it's not like, oh, if there's, you know, five bad toes this month or ten bad toes in total. There's nothing like that that we've. No governor we put in place like that is my question.
Correct.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right, counsel. Now it's to you for discussion on this item. Tina?
Sorry, I have a hard time putting unmute. Um, when, um. When Alder Jacobs was asking the questions in regards to measurables, one of the numbers I wrote down earlier was about. Um, Todd, when you had mentioned fifty-six percent of people never pay, it would be really interesting to see. Um, what that trend is moving forward and. One of the things that I was thinking about in regards to cost, if the cost is high, like what is, what is the breaking point for somebody to not pick up their, their automobile and, and. What are the financial circumstances for some people? That's, you know, a month, two months of groceries. So. You know, making choices and depending on the value. So that, that was some of the thoughts I had as we're thinking about. Um, success in this arena and I, Alder Jacobs, thank you for mentioning and questioning in regards to. Um, the fees for the city versus the fee for the citizens. I do agree that, you know, I, I have. Had more than one towing and deer. We live in deer, deer state. Um, and it's not fun. And so I, I think that's something that we do need to figure out.
Counsel, Steve?
Yeah, thank you, your honor. Um. Just a general question, um, and I know, um. Russell mentioned that, uh, they may have to subcontract out for, let's say, a, a fire truck or whatever. But we put, uh. Pretty good parameters around insurance for the main vendors. When a subcontractor is called in and let's say they. They can't tow our fire truck to a location without turning it over, doing something. You know, that would, uh, cause injury to that million dollar piece of equipment. Who's on the hook for that? Does that go back to, in this case, uh, if it's Russell, does that go back to the Badger State? Insurance or does that go to the subcontractor, which? You know, we're not checking to find out, you know, if they have adequate insurance. We're just contracting out with Badger State. So. Just a kind of a general question, I guess.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. So it would fall because they would be a hired auto to us. It would fall on our policy and their own policy. And the company that we are, would most likely use in that event has already told your fire truck many times and has the proper and adequate coverage. For that. Um, again, you know, and if we were to, you know, you did, and you know, we needed top drill fast in a twenty minute, I would. You will call prairie land, which we know they have the insurance for it. Or I could call Bills or Schmitz, who also bid on the contract, has the equipment and insurance required for it. Um, we did up our policy to the, um, higher limits. We put the umbrella on, um. That matched prairie lands, actually. We matched theirs. We used theirs as an example and matched their umbrella. Um. And the rest of our policy update, we were waiting on one more document. I do have the accord here if you'd like to see it. I don't have the rest of them. Unfortunately, I wasn't prepared for that this evening. But it would fall on both of our insurances. If, if. Say I use Bills and Bills didn't cover everything, our insurance would have to step in and cover the rest.
Okay, thank you.
Cause prairie land was, that was used. Uh, now we'll just have to wait to see if the fees happen over time as that standard is maintained.
All right, counsel, anybody else? Bob?
Um, does, I apologize if this was already stated. Does Badger State serve other municipalities in the area?
Yes, sir. We service State Patrol. Uh, we service Dane County. We service Windsor, Wanakee. And the Forest Police Departments.
Are those contracted municipalities?
Uh, Dane County doesn't hold a contract in per se. We have a territory we cover for them. State Patrol, we cover a portion of the interstates. Um, Windsor uses us, you know, almost inclusively. The Forest also and Wanakee almost always calls us. There are other times where people do request other companies. But no, those, those municipalities are not contracted.
Keep this discussion with the city council now and no questions. Other city council? Anybody else?
Yeah, I do. And this isn't a question for either the vendors or anyone. It's just, um, Alder Stocker makes a great point. Uh, uh, about this insurance question and everyone on this council knows this. Um, based on a reason, you know, small LLCs can't always make hold when something goes wrong. And we know this and I'll tell you that's right now, that's, that's my greatest concern, but I want to say another concern as well, you know? This predates a lot of people on the council, but we talked about hiring assessors out. Um, you know, and, you know, hired guns to do, to assessing. And we argued against it ultimately because. Um, we're essentially cheapening, we're doing a race to the bottom. We're cheaping the labor pool. Because we weren't going to give those kind of people benefits and, and while it might've been a little bit of a benefit for city taxpayers. It, it wasn't the kind of, um, wasn't the kind of environment we wanted to create. And I, that's, I'm not, I'm not, you know, supporting either one of these. I'm just asking about our process really and. That's what, and Todd raised questions to me and I know he did to, to Mary, Maureen, and I'm not sure who else he spoke to, but, but I'm just, you know. I'm not sure, I'm not saying that Badger's not the right one and I'm definitely not saying that, um, prairie land is the right one. But I'm saying that I'm not completely happy with where we're at right now.
Well, in a moment, we're going to find out what the consensus of the council is. Have anybody else in the council wish to? Discuss this? I see none. Jennifer?
Well, just, I just have a comment. Um, I, I really don't know how I want to vote at this particular point. I'm just very confused by both of them. Um. So I guess we'll see what you all have to say.
All right, last call for discussion.
Yeah, one more, one more question. This is, um, this is one to Aaron. I'm sorry. If we don't agree to a contract tonight, what's the next step? Or maybe that's for the chief. What's the next step?
Excuse me, I guess I'll try my best at that. Alder Jacobs is, is, is one, I guess I would encourage the council to focus on the process. Um, I don't, I don't know if, if, how the council would manage vendors coming to, to the council on a regular basis to, to, to argue it out. Um, so if we have a, a process issue and how this was done. Uh, and the council would like to see something different in that process, uh, that, that would help us and that would be in the scoring. Or that would be in, in the, how the RFP was, was crafted or. You know, something that would give us guidance that would lead to an outcome that the council wanted to see, uh, in, in it. Um, what, uh, you know, Michelle is mentioning is that, uh, the process was followed. Uh, according to our policies and the RFPs and the scoring that was done. Um, I can understand vendors, uh, wanting to challenge that or have a discussion around that. But ultimately we do need a process in how we select our, our vendors. Otherwise. Uh, you know, as you know, the city does business with lots of vendors. We can, you know, have each one come. Uh, before you, but I, but I fear that that will be all of what you do. So I think, I think what, what we would ask is guidance in, in the process and where we, we went. Where, where it went wrong in order to refine it and, and redo that process in a way. That would lead to an outcome that was, that was desirable.
So let me pull back my, if I sound, if I came off like I was being critical, it's just, believe me, I'm not saying I could do any better. That's absolutely for sure. I mean, I didn't, I didn't even understand any of these questions until, um, they were raised with me. By Todd and, you know, I still am not sure. Again, Russell, you may have a space shuttle, that would be awesome, but I really don't know how any of this stuff works. So I, truth is, I, I don't know. I, I think I'd like to know, I'd like to have greater clarity in, in the process. I'm not sure if we should redo the process. I understand it was redone once already, right? We put out an RFP. And we only got one response. So then we changed the criteria. I, I'm not sure. Is three vendors enough to, to be, to be had is, that's just another question I have. I'm just. Again, I don't know enough. I know enough to be dangerous. I don't know what I'm talking about though. I'll be the first guy to say it.
Can I, can I just say one more thing? We knew enough to know what we wanted to make sure. We asked. The vendors, are you capable of doing these things? We also wanted to make sure it was fair and people were aware that that. Request or proposal was out there. We rated, not only did our department rate it, but so did finance. We, we reviewed before we even posted the RFP, we reviewed it through the finance department and city attorney and it. To help make sure things are fair. Just because a vendor, uh, two vendors scored higher. We shouldn't be afraid to go with what we feel was a very fair and very thorough process. Because. The third score is going to contact Alders and question the process and question what we did.
So, but, uh, I understand, Michelle, and I'm saying, I'm not, I'm not saying that, um, prairie land is the answer. I'm saying that. I do want the questions answered regarding the licenses. Adequate insurance in particular, and I guess the bid sheet is the one other thing, but those are the. It's got nothing to do with prairie land or Badger for that matter. It's, it's got to do with those questions that I'm concerned are not answered.
I, I think Attorney Leonard could answer the licenses and insurance, uh, questions. That is. An area of focus and expertise on his behalf for sure.
Well, my, thank you, Alder, uh, excuse me, thank you, Alder Jacobs and, uh, and Mr. Oppenheimer. My understanding, uh, from having had several discussions, uh, with Michelle, with the finance department. Uh, is that the process as outlined was followed. And, uh, it's my experience that, um, engagement on this level tends to muddy the waters. Uh, engagement in this sort of an arena, it, which turns a competition, uh, into, uh, it turns it into a debate. Now, we did not, we did not put out an RFP that considered scoring of debate skills. Or, uh, presentation, uh, persuasiveness at common council as a factor to be scored. The police department with all of their expertise and their years of dealing with contracts. Worked with finance department, uh, and, and with me to put together a process that, that they then followed. Which is not to say that their scoring is absolutely correct. It's what their scoring came back as. Their independent scoring came back as. Reasonable minds could differ. And as you say, you're not sure of the answer. Is it Badgerland? Is it, is it, is it, uh, prairie land? Is it Bills? Is it Schmitz? The people that we trust and we charge with doing this job with the greatest expertise went out and did their best. They followed the process. I think, uh, Chief Steffes, uh, supervised a good process. Uh, he's allowing, uh, Ms. Garrison to answer the questions as she was most fully involved at different stages along the way. Uh, the insurance has been met. The, uh. The various factors that were persuasive, uh, have been met. And I, I think what we have is, you know, the ability to follow through with a decision point, um.
Well, we're into discussion on this now, Mark. Let's stay focused on that. So Steve, let's hear what you've got.
Yeah.
And then I'm going to keep it with the city council from here on in. If you've got more than you want to say, let's get it, but we need to do the vote on this one. Go ahead, Steve.
Thank you, your honor. Yeah, it's, it's interesting that, uh, I've heard, uh. Badger State Towing referred to as Badgerland a number of times tonight. And that's kind of where I'm going with this. Um. Badgerland and, uh, you know, as you know, within a month ago. We had a multi-year contract for tow, for refuse and, uh. Where I, I guess where I'm going or the question I want to ask Aaron, I, I think I understood from that go around. That the RFP process was being, if you want to call it revamped or whatever terminology you want to use. But if that's the case, I think, you know, there's going to be some subjectivity in the scoring at all times. But it would be my. But it would be my hope that if there's something we can do to take one hundred percent of the subjectivity out of it, so we wouldn't come to these multi-year contracts and have, you know, the vendors um think that they should have scored, been scored high, um, higher. Um, I think that's gonna be, you know, a benefit of the city. Not sure how we do that, maybe it's asking more, you know, poignant questions or whatever when they uh go to.
So from here on in, I want to stay focused on the resolution that's in front of us. The process is something we can come back to, that would be a, a legitimate committee of the whole item. If we have reservations about the process or even the, the ethics of charging some people more than others, that's not the issue that's before us here. And it's time for us to focus on that issue and dispose of it, and it is the recommendation coming from public safety to approve this contract. If you don't want to approve the contract, then vote against it. If you do, vote for it. But let's stay focused on that. Bob?
Uh, if I could just finish, Your Honor. Where I was going with it is, I wanted to know whether a referral would need to be made at the end of this meeting that would ask that this process be revamped um in some way to make it less subjectivity.
Certainly a referral to have that discussion.
Yeah.
Would be in order, Steve. So let's leave it there, and let's not ask Aaron to comment on that at the moment. Bob?
I just wanted to say that I appreciate the comments from Michelle, Aaron, and Mark. And uh, I, I agree with them that uh, uh, I don't think the city council should be in the business of trying to re-score this process. We've, we have professionals in the field who have, have done this, uh, put out a proper RFP and scored the proposals, and uh I'm in support of the recommendation.
All right. Any other council discussion on this recommendation that's coming to us? Is there anybody else that wishes to speak? Jennifer, I see nobody, so let's get to it.
Okay. Yokus?
Aye.
McElroy?
Pass.
Polinsky?
Pass.
Stocker?
Aye.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
No.
McElroy?
No.
Polinsky?
Aye.
The motion passes five to two, mayor.
All right, thank you. All right, we are moving on to unfinished business, action required. And Tim, Tim, I need you to explain to us what's happening here and what is the, what action we should take that's in the best interest of resolving this.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Your Honor. Um, I will try and be as brief as possible because this, this particular action the city doesn't undertake frequently, so um, it is a little bit complex. That being said, um, what is being considered this evening is the vacation of a portion of city right-of-way, street right-of-way, in this case, uh, South Wildwood right-of-way. This particular request was introduced about sixteen months ago, and this was introduced as part of a a development proposal uh that involved the Pumpkin Patch developer. Um, however, the particulars of that, that piece at that time um did not come to fruition. Um, but yet the action related to the vacation of the street right-of-way, still, I'll say, remains out there and not acted upon. So because the Pumpkin Patch um GDP development and associated plat, and subsequently, as pointed out in the staff memo, the Roars GDP, which is located immediately adjacent to this right-of-way, were acted upon affirmatively. Um, those developments rely on this portion of right-of-way. So staff is recommending that the city, since they initiated this request, simply withdraw the request. Simply withdraw the request to vacate the rights of way. Therefore, the, the public hearing associated with this as well as action on the resolution would not be needed. So that is staff's recommendation. Hopefully that answers your question, but I'm certainly available for, for any other questions.
So in making that withdrawal, is that an action that we take?
Yes.
So we need a motion to make the withdrawal?
Correct.
And that's the proper language?
So the, the action would be, um, that the city would be undertaking would be the withdrawal of the pursuit of the vacation of the South Wildwood Street right-of-way.
Okay, that's why I'm confused. Seems like there's a double negative in there. So that's the motion? Is anybody ready to make that motion?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. And is there a second?
I'll second it.
Steve's second, so now we're into discussion on this. Seems like a Gordian knot to me. So is there any discussion on this? I see none. Jennifer?
Yokus?
Aye.
McElroy?
Aye.
Polinsky?
Aye.
Stocker?
Aye.
Bowling?
Aye.
Crombie?
Aye.
Jacobs?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Good. Now, Tim, is there a second item here, the resolution approving the, no?
No, so essentially what's, what's happened is the um city has now withdrawn this request, therefore, a public hearing is not needed, nor is action on the resolution.
Well, you, you told me that by email, so it sounds familiar, but I did not grasp the process.
Tim doesn't have great writing skills, that's why we're getting rid of him. We're, we're sending him to, to Wanakee, so, you know.
Let them deal with it over there.
It sounds like sabotage.
This afternoon, Mark, I was thinking, how are we gonna do this without Tim?
I'm gonna miss this guy so much. I, I'm doing everything in my power, but he's not listening, so.
Yeah, I feel the same.
More, more coffee, Mark, more coffee.
Okay, you got it. You got it.
Right, well.
I'll borrow for it.
No new business. So referrals, Steve, you want to make a referral?
Yes, Your Honor, I would like to make the referral, referral to, um, if it's not already in flight, to revamp the multi-year contract um to have, and I would like to set the bar high and say zero subjectivity um put into place. Um, I know there's probably gonna be a margin there, but we need some, but if we could make it so there's no subjectivity in the scoring, that would be my preference.
Okay, is that clear?
I will, I will say that um Isaac Isomoff wrote a book called I, Robot. Um, so we'll do our, we'll do our best to try to design something. Um, we are engaged in that process as uh, as uh Mr. Schleicher or Mr. Oppenheimer knows. I don't think that it will be redundant. I think this is just an added dimension to the process that we are engaged in. And believe me, I, I'm not trying to lecture you folks, you can get involved anywhere you want to be. My concern is that we move outside of an RFP process when we engage in debate with people who propose in a public forum.
Okay.
And it provides, provides worry, lots of worry to staff. So I hope, I hope my comments were taken the way they were meant.
So there's something happened with that knee. We've heard more from you tonight than we have in the six years I've been the mayor.
So I think something tickled. Aaron tells me that, you know, he, he requires my guidance, so I'm doing my best to step up and make sure that he feels safe and secure and you know, there's no reason for me to be shy. I just try to, I try to let you guys do what, what you want to do, but sometimes I, I need to jump in, so.
You've done well tonight, Mark. So are there any announcements?
I hope your next doctor uh gives a similar type of guidance.
Right. Announcements? Be none, a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
There's a second in there. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Do as nay. Thank you for your time this evening.
Good luck, Mark.
Well done.
Thank you.